Good evening, everyone. I'm, okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight is August 14th, 2024. This is the full board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Ettinger, can you take the roll call, please?
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Eric Brooks.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
David Watt.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. And can you please verify that the meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We don't have bright lights tonight. And we're a couple of weeks away from some student updates, or at least having our students back, so we will move right into our citizen speakers. So we're at the point of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have one speaker tonight. As such, the speaker will be notified at three minutes but allowed up to five minutes to complete their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium should be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphone. Our speaker tonight is Paul Reese.
Good evening. But I don't know if he actually read the speech, but it was Orwellian in nature. If there was a sentence, I could, I could, I could name that speech. It's, "All students are equal, but some are more equal than others." That's exactly how his speech went. He, for some reason, in here, we are tracking the sexual orientation and activities of our students. It's plain and simple. That's what he said. That we are documenting and grading, looking at how their grades are, and according to their sexual orientation. I've been coming here for a while. I've never heard of this. I don't know when this district started doing this. I know Mr. Borowski had a hard time with them not tracking PLPs a while back, but they can track this? Oh, is this board okay with that? I mean, it should be questioned why he was, he should be questioned why he is tracking the sexual orientation and the sexual activities of our students according to how they're being graded, but not our PLPs. They had nothing for that. I don't know if anyone else in here has a problem with it. I sure as heck did when I listened to it. I had to listen to it twice to get it all, but I couldn't listen to it any more than that. So he's tracking our PLPs. And he's not tracking our PLPs. He's tracking the orientation of our students. What else is he tracking that we don't know about? Is what is he tracking of parents and what their opinions are and how they're grading to their, their kids? What else is this guy tracking? I'd sure like to know. I think he should be asked. What's going on at Butler? Because we had a herd of seals out here clapping for him that night. I, I was at a loss that what he's doing. You know? I just, I can't understand when we started doing this, when this became okay, why he thinks that it's okay to track the orientation of our students and, and how they're doing in their schools, our schools. I just, I am boggled by that when everything else going on, that this is even tolerated. I have more things to say, but it, it just, the fact that Mark called them out on PLPs and he had nothing, and then the orientation of our students is what he finds that he needs to track is just mind blowing to me. I've been coming, like I said, here a long time. I've never heard of such a thing. And I guess there's a lot of teachers at that school working with him to do this.
Two minutes.
Because they were clapping along and they were here, and he didn't pull that information out of nowhere. You know? I'd surely like to know what's going on over there. And I think it'd be fair if at the end of this night someone calls on him to, to come and answer to this board, what is going on at Butler? Why, since when is this okay to track? Anyways, that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll begin tonight with minute approval. We have three sets of minutes for your consideration. July 10th, regular board meeting, July 30th, special board meeting, and July 30th, executive session. Mrs. Voight?
I move to approve all three as, as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Koenig. Any comments, changes, discussion? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
David Watt?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Next up is the WEF update. Mrs. Koenig.
On the Waukesha Education. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board of Directors will not be meeting in person again until September. The WEF golf outing was a huge success with 172 golfers, and we somehow dodged the storms. Thank you to board members who came out to volunteer and, or participated in other ways. We appreciate it. Next year's outing will take place on Thursday, August 7th, 2025. Start practicing now. We hope to have dates for the rest of our 2025 events soon. Stay tuned. We would like to welcome back all staff and welcome new staff. We hope you all had a great summer and are looking forward to a successful year. New staff should feel free to reach out to us anytime if there are any questions. As always, we are seeking new committee members who are interested in eventually joining our board. We are in great need of a new treasurer, as our current treasurer has been on the board for seven years. Madam President, this concludes my WEF report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda for tonight is discussion with the possibility for action regarding the format for our board vacancy interviews. So I'd like to present a little bit of the details, and then we can open it up for discussion. As you all know, on Wednesday, tonight, we'll be discussing and potentially ratifying the format for filling the vacant board position created by the resignation of Mr. Moore. The procedures for filling board vacancies are, are specified in our board policy, so Board Policy 142.5 vacancies is very specific about the steps that we need to take to fill those vacancies. It does also require that we ratify the procedure. My sense was that since we had the board meeting tonight, it would make more sense to ratify the procedure this evening, if possible, so that we can move right into the interviews on September 5th. So just to kind of go back to the timeline at hand, Mr. Moore resigned on Friday, July 12th. We posted, or we sent a public notification about that, that same afternoon, and accepted applications between Monday, July 15th and Friday, July 26th at 3:00 PM in the afternoon. We had 10 applications, which consisted of a letter of interest and a resume that were received before the deadline. Two applicants have actually since withdrawn, and so we have eight people who will move on to the interview process. As currently planned, interviews will be held starting at 5:00 PM on Thursday, September 5th, here in the boardroom. Each candidate would have up to 25 minutes to respond to interview questions, and a determination by law for the order in which the interviews would be held was conducted under witness, and that order would be provided to the candidates once we have the process ratified. So the, the following procedure is what's proposed for your consideration tonight. Upon arrival, the candidates would be asked to wait in room 210 down the hall until it's their selected time. Mrs. Ettinger would accompany the candidates back to the boardroom when their time comes. We, obviously, all of this is up for discussion if needed, but the plan would be to have the interviews video recorded but not live streamed, so that each candidate has a fair chance to answer the questions for the, the first time when they're asked of them. Myself and Dr. Seabert would develop the interview questions that would be common, and the same questions would be asked of all applicants. Those questions themselves would be embargoed until the night of that meeting, again, so that there's no chance that they're, they're being shared ahead of time. And then each of us would have the opportunity to ask relevant or pertinent follow-up questions of the applicants within that designated timeframe. Once all the interviews are completed on the 5th, then we can engage in discussion prior to casting ballot votes. The, the balloting would proceed similar to how we select our board officers, so we would drop the, the lowest or non-vote getters until we've reached a clear majority. So it's important just to understand that a clear majority, although we are currently a board of eight, a clear majority would still require five. So five votes for one applicant would be required to finalize that appointment. So we would continue with rounds of voting until that clear majority is reached. If a clear majority decision cannot be reached, the vacancy could temporarily remain open. Also, per state statute, if that vacancy is not filled within 60 days of the date on which, from the date which it first existed, so that deadline for us is September 10th, the vacancy would be filled by the appointment of the board president, and that's also in our policy. That appointee would be sworn into office by Mrs. Ettinger as soon as possible after that appointment and would be eligible to attend our September 11th board meeting. And then they would hold office until April 22nd, 2025. So we can certainly open it up for any questions or clarification or discussion. Mrs. Voight?
One point of clarification. Interviewees were supposed to be starting room 210. After their interview, could they stay or should they return to 210?
What was done in the past? I think that's a good question.
I don't, I think they could stay, but most of them didn't. But I could have to go back and look at that.
Mr. Watt?
Yeah, I, I actually think whether they stay here or not, they shouldn't go back to 210.
I agree with that.
I don't think a lot of people taking interview questions.
I agree with that. I mean, just to clarify too, the, the proceeding, the, the meeting itself is open to the public. It's just not livestreamed, so. Mark?
Well, yes. It doesn't seem right for anyone to stay, because then they would have the advantage of hearing someone else be interviewed when other people did not hear them interviewed, other candidates did not hear them interviewed. So I, that doesn't seem right to me. It seems like they would have to leave until...
They won't, but they wouldn't get questioned again, right? They would have concluded their interview, they'd be in here, yeah, they'll, they'll hear other people, but I don't know what advantage that gives them once they've completed their interview.
Well, I know somewhere in there it states that they can't be present when other people are being interviewed.
Till they're, before their interview.
Uh huh. Mr. Brooks, do you have a comment?
No, I was gonna mention what Mr. Watt had said about making, it makes sense that they would not return to 210 to avoid any questions being shared.
Having been through this process once before myself, I mean, I think there's a courtesy, obviously, to, you know, to the other applicants, but I, it is, it is a public interview, so I don't know that we could force those individuals not to be present, also since we are recording the interviews. Ms., actually, right.
The policy says applicants will be requested as a courtesy to not be present while other applicants are being interviewed.
Okay. So, so it's a request, not a requirement, whether before or after, so.
Thank you for calling that out. I agree.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
If we can move on. All right. So I'm a little unclear on the first round of voting. So let's say, for instance, three candidates get two votes and two of them get one vote. Are we allowing then those five to continue on? Or are we dropping the two with, with one vote as well? Because it kind of sounds like it says both. It says...
Didn't have any experiences before. You did from the interviewee's side, but as from the interviewer perspective, that we dropped the ones that didn't get any votes.
Right, that I understand.
And then kept running it. You know, if you had at least two or one, or, you know, they, they stayed in the running, and then you dropped each, each successive validating.
So as long as a candidate gets one vote the first round, they will be in the second round?
That's how I remember it.
I don't think that's necessarily what we're required to do, because if someone got zero votes, dropping them is kind of irrelevant, but dropping the individual, the single votes, would also, again, force to recast those votes and roll it forward. So I, I think that it should be the least number of votes until we, you know, we continue to force those individual votes forward. So I would look at it like at least in, in a scenario where there's a zero and a one, and then there's twos, those least number would, would go, right? If, if we just remove the zeros and then we revoted, we're not going to get a different outcome.
Yep, yep, well.
Mr., Mr. Borowski, I think, had a couple more?
Yeah, I guess my concern is, I mean, if, if you have one candidate getting four votes and one getting three and one getting one, that's a little clear, but when it's, when maybe there's only one vote separating a candidate, to not allow them to move on to the second round is a little bit of a concern.
Mrs. Koenig?
I think, I know what you're saying, I understand what, what you're trying to say. I think the reason that you would want to drop the one vote is because otherwise, it's like Dr. Piasik said, we would just continuously keep voting the same way if we're determined, like, I want that person, or I want to vote, you know, it would just continuously be the twos and then the ones. So I think the purpose of dropping the, the lowest vote is to have someone maybe who voted, you know, that, that person to have to reconsider from the majority. I mean, I think, I've been in processes like that, and that's kind of the purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, talking about just the first round.
If I could, Dr. Seabert's gonna...
Read the policy.
Cover the policy for us, because we don't need to make it this complicated.
Sure. So it says applicants who do not receive votes and/or those with the least number of votes shall be eliminated from further ballots, and balloting shall continue until a majority decision has been reached.
So and would be the first round, no votes and the least number of votes. Subsequently, anybody receiving any votes then would be the, you know, the least would drop. So I think that scenario where there's zeros and ones and also twos, I think that covers that. Mr. Borowski? Mr. Watt?
Yes. So I have a couple of questions around the balloting process. So first of all, I just want to confirm, the number of applicants, is it still nine?
Is eight.
It is now eight, okay. So I'm considering a couple of potential scenarios, and I'm wondering how balloting works, if these should rise. Say our first ballot, we have a single vote for each, for each candidate. Conceivably, you could have an eight-way tie with one vote each. My assumption, and I just want to clarify, is that there is the opportunity for discussion by the board prior to each round of voting. Is that correct? I'm trying to figure out how we would ever unbreak a one-one, one or maybe four people vote for two, right? Or do we only get the opportunity to discuss what we heard in the interviews as a group before the first ballot, and each round of voting after that has no discussion prior to the casting of ballots?
I'm not sure where in the policy it says that we continue to discuss round after round. I think once we start the voting process, we need to complete it. And I think if we have, in my opinion, if we have two rounds without any movement, we could probably offer to vote again. Or if everyone is firm in their decisions, then I think we don't fill the vacancy. I, I don't know the likelihood of that, but I don't, I don't want to try to predict. I just, you know?
I mean, honestly, I probably see the most likely scenario being four people tied it to, or at some point, two people being tied it for. I think those are highly likely scenarios. So I just want to understand, like, what process we as a board can go through to potentially try to break those ties, so that we don't just end in a stalemate without there being an opportunity for us to further discuss candidates or why we may or may not be wanting to perhaps change a vote.
It's, it sounds like we're gonna, we would just continue to vote, or at least another round or two. I mean, four at two, that's gonna, I think that's gonna shake out the next round. You know?
I, I would be fine offering, in terms of our procedures, that if we have two rounds without any changes in the voting, that we could collectively decide if we want to vote again, or if we'd like to end the voting. And I think that's the way that each one of us could ultimately indicate whether we're firm in our position on who we've selected, or whether we would be open to making some sort of a change. So at the end of the day, if we, if we can't get to a five for one applicant, I mean, we have a backup plan for that, but I hope we don't have to use it.
And just to clarify on that point, I'm assuming it's a majority of the board members present? So let's say somebody was sick and was unable to make it that night, then four would be the...
That's fair, yes, that's correct. Thank you for clarifying that, yeah. Right, but if there are eight, it will require five? Oh, sorry.
If I may, our quorum policy states, whenever the board has one or more vacancies, the quorum during that time shall be a majority of the members on the board. So I think it's five regardless.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I thought you were saying it was four. It's five regardless. Yeah, okay.
Of how many people are here. So in that, Senator, I just laid out, it would need to be a five-two vote as opposed to a four-three?
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. That's a good point, yeah. Mr. Zenobia?
Yes, thank you. Around the questions, do we know how many questions each candidate will be asked, and I'm assuming they'll be all the same? And then follow-up questions is, you know, that's what the 25 minutes is mainly for, for us to go around and ask follow-ups if needed?
The 25 minutes would be in total, so one interview would start at 5:00, the next one would start at 5:25, the next one would start at 5:50. We, Mrs. Ettinger and I did discuss scheduling a short break in between, just so that we're not stuck. So that candidate, that applicant would need to be wrapped up by that time. Dr. Seabert has the list of questions that was used in the past, just as a reference. We're working on proposing some questions that would be reasonable, fair, that everyone would have a fair shot at answering and could bring their perspective to the table without, you know, feeling, they're not specific questions, they're, they're general questions. I am certainly open to any suggestions about questions. Those are, I just feel that embargoing the question list prior to the night of the interviews is appropriate, because I think that's fair to the applicants, and it, it just secures the process. As far as the follow-up questions, they do need to be follow-up questions and relevant questions. And we, as a board, need to, to be fair in how we engage with all the candidates. So I think clarifying questions, I think follow-up about things that may be raised, but it also, we will not have time for every one of us to ask a follow-up question of every candidate. I think that's just being, you know, respectful of one another and the time that we have available, and ensuring that the candidate has an opportunity to tell us why they're here. Mrs. Voight?
In some interview experiences that I've had, if you raise a follow-up question, it'd need to be asked of all the future candidates that that same follow-up question. You know, and it's, and that's our determination, if that's something that we want to go to. But, yeah, I think we have our set questions, you know, and that was being consistent all the way through is probably more realistic than...
Yeah. I don't know how, how practical that is if the follow-up is specific to something that they said. For example, I know when, when I was part of the process, there was a specific question asked of me by Mr. Como that would, couldn't have been asked of anybody else, because it was specifically related to me. So I, but it was relevant, so I, you know, I do think that that might be difficult, but I think if it's something that consistently shows up in what we're hearing from candidates, it would be fair to repeat those questions, yeah. Anybody else? Mr. Watt?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, have we, have we in the past, or would we be willing to consider putting a time box around how long a candidate has to answer each question? Number one, I, you know, that would ensure that we get to each question for each candidate. I also think that it provides opportunity for follow-up. I mean, I know myself, I know this will shock you all, but I can be a little wordy sometimes. And so I, I would be concerned perhaps that we might not get the same opportunity for follow-up with one candidate versus another if, if they use up, say, 22 of their 25 minutes answering whatever the body of questions is.
I'm curious what the rest of you think. I, I don't love that idea, but... Any other thoughts? Mrs. Koenig?
I can see that that's a really good point, though, because you would want to hear their perspective on, if there's four questions or whatever it may be. It would be good to hear their perspective on all four, rather than just maybe three and elaborate answers. To be consistent with all the candidates, it would be, I, I would feel it would be beneficial to hear their responses to all of the questions, so, while not, I don't want to rush them or make them feel like they're under a, you know, but just timely and maybe someone kind of motioned that we need to move on type of a thing, but I, I would like to hear their responses to all of the questions.
Mr. Zenobia?
So it, maybe I, maybe I just missed this, but why don't we ask all four? If we want to get the questions out there, why don't we just ask all four, and then if we have follow-up clarifying questions, could we just go back in the second time? So if we crafted four questions, we get all the answers, and then the board can, or would we do it in real time? I've not seen the process, so I don't know.
I think both are good points. I think we should ask however many, three or four questions, whatever it might be, and save any follow-up questions for after those being answered. And I guess, in my opinion, I think it's up to the candidate to make best use of their time, just like any interview, in answering questions, as far as how long they take to answer a question. I guess that's up to them.
Mr. Watt?
Yeah, so here's my concern. It would be very easy for someone who spends a lot of time answering their questions to leave us as a board with no time left, to ask follow-ups on things that they may have said during their answers that we, which is why I kind of think maybe a, whether it's a time box around each, well, around each question would, would get us to a point where we could leave a certain amount of time for, for follow-up. But I don't want to, as much as I certainly appreciate leaving the candidate with the opportunity to use their time as AC fit, it's also our time, and I want to make sure we reserve some for us if we have clarifying questions.
Mrs. Voight?
Related to that, I think you could set a 20-minute for questions, and then five minutes for follow-up. You'll have that kind of a, you know, you have this X amount of time to answer the questions of the interview, and the last five minutes would be allowed for, rather than answering, having each question be monitored, you know, that could be another way of being able to build in time for the follow-up, because that is an important part of it.
Yeah. I think the most important thing is that we're fair, and we give every applicant the opportunity to tell us why they're the right applicant. opportunity to tell us why they're the right applicant. I think, to Ms. Zenobia's point, it is somewhat on the applicant to be able to answer questions concisely and directly. And from my perspective, if somebody were able to spend 25 minutes answering one question, and I wasn't able to ask or get answers to the other questions, I would have a really hard time considering that individual to be appointed, unless their answer to that one question was everything I needed to know. And I don't have, if you all don't have any problem, I don't have any problem with interrupting a candidate or an applicant to say, "In the interest of time, could we move on to the next question?" I don't think there's any policy against that. Again, I think it's about being fair. But I can't anticipate all of the scenarios, you know, I just, I don't know. I mean, based on, yeah, Ms. Zenobia?
You took my point. I think if someone used a tactic to stall, I don't know how many votes they'd get, but I do think it would be important in the, as far as fairness goes, to everybody that is going to come in here to give some answer to every question that we're going to ask of them. I think that's the only way we're going to judge one candidate from another, is to get some answer, whether it's one word or five minutes on each question, if that's three or four. So I, if that means reserving our follow-ups for the end, or making those very concise on our part, that's the way I would like to see it go, but, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mrs. Voight?
I would have a hard time with the shot clock kind of approach to answering the question, you know, each one. But I think if you can identify for the candidates that there's going to be seven questions, or there's going to be five questions, and you have approximately 20 minutes to address all those answers, it puts that time management element on them to be aware of it, and assuming we want to allow time for follow-up questions.
I think that's fair. Mr. Brooks? So I, stop me if somebody has something else. I did hear one item that I would want to add to the procedures that we had read, and that would be if we have two rounds with the same, two rounds of voting with the same outcome, that we should take a vote as to whether we want to vote again. So we would probably just stop, do a voice vote on whether we want to continue with another round. At that point, I think if we had another same outcome, we would consider that we can't finalize a decision. Is that how you all understood it? Mr. Brooks?
So, if I'm reading this correctly, if we are unable to come to a decision by the end of the evening, and that situation plays out where we're at a stalemate, we would have up until the 10th for the board president to make a determination if we're unable to come to an agreement. Is there anything in the policy where, let's say, between that time, between the Thursday, September 5th and September 10th, to reconvene and revote? I don't know how likely that scenario would be, but is there anything in policy where that would be acceptable?
I understand that we could. I guess my concern with that would be, what new information would we have between the time of the interviews and the decision? And I would actually be concerned that that would...
Yeah, I think those are fair concerns. I'm just thinking for the purpose of process, trying to imagine various scenarios.
I think that's important, yeah. Ms. Kozlowski?
Okay, so I'm reading the policy as it stands today, and everything that we've walked through has been in the policy. I think the couple clarifying points on what happens when you're in a deadlock, which could occur, and I think that's probably the biggest item to note. But everything else on this, I mean, this is a policy we've had, we've had to implement it, I think, what, three times in the last 20 years? And I, I mean, to some degree, I think we're overthinking it, that I would like for us to have a scheduled informal opportunity for these citizens to come and talk about and share with us their thoughts on answering these questions, give them that. Dr. Piesek, I like the point that we can curtail and say, "Can we move, can we help you move along?", and go through with all of that. But I, there's nothing in reading the policy that I have any recommendation to change or to do anything other different than narrowing down kind of the questions that we would be asking, because I think those are the only things that really are going to change to be relevant with the times and where we're at with this current board. And I'm good to go.
Okay. Ms. Barowski?
I do just have one more clarifying question that I think is important. So if we are not able to vote on anyone, and it goes to the appointment by the board president, is there anywhere in here, it doesn't look like it, where the president has to choose from the top two or three vote-getters, or at least choose from the candidates that applied? I mean, is there anything that holds the president to picking who's been stalemated into voting?
There is nothing in the policy that requires, I mean, essentially, that would be saying that a clear majority is required, or just a majority. Right.
Right, so I guess my question is...
Do you want to change the policy?
Well, I mean, I would think that the president would choose somebody who's been stalemated, but it sounds like they could not, and could not even choose one of the applicants.
That's how I read it, that's correct. Ms. Kozlowski?
Okay. So just kind of in response to that, Mr. Barowski, I take it as a personal accountability of this board, that we can come together and make a decision on this, without ever having to put the president in a position to be in it. I think that is a far bigger concern that I would have, that if we can't sit here and come to an agreement on all of this. And of course, we can get into statistics, because we know that I love statistics, and we could really narrow this down, which, but I think the odds of that are, I think there is a fair odds, let me say, that we could get stuck to be split on two, but as a board, it's our responsibility to get down to one. And I think we need to make sure that we understand that that is what we are here to do, and that we have to be able to somehow get there.
One more procedural question. When it comes to six questions, seven questions, eight questions, will one person ask all those questions, or are we going to spread the opportunity to ask questions among the board?
I'm happy to spread that around. Yeah. Yeah. In fact, I think that's what was done last time. Yeah. Mr. Wad?
What will be the method of casting votes? Will they be like we do during our officer elections, where they're written on a slip of paper, and Ms. Edinger counts them, or are we roll-calling?
It would be written, signed.
Okay. I do want to clarify, though, those are subject to open records, right? Like, if someone were to ask for those...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Eddinger?
Yes, it'll be the paper ballots, just like we do when we do the officers, only you also put your name on it. And that is record in the minutes, as to such-and-such person received three votes, in parentheses, the people that voted for them. So everything is recorded, it's all open.
Thank you.
I certainly do hope that we can come to a decision. And it would be the last thing I would want, to be in a position to have to appoint somebody. But I, and I don't know what the evening will bring, but I would certainly have no intention of making any such decision involving people that weren't actually interested in the job. So... Or you can fire me, I guess. But I think our goal is to be fair, right? We want to follow our policy, we want to be compliant with statute, we want the applicants to feel heard and respected, and hopefully, we reach a conclusion together. We are not required to ratify the process tonight, but if we did, we could jump right into interviews next week. Otherwise, we could kick it to, uh, next week, sorry, we'd kick it to September 5th. Mrs. Voight?
One more procedural question. When will we receive the resume information, the applicant's information, to be able to review, along with the interview process?
Yeah, we discussed that. Was that day of, day before?
How did we do that in the past, Sue?
They would, I would make copies and put it in the board packet. We could do that this week, or we can do it next week?
The meeting itself is on a Thursday, so we could, the Friday before that, that would be okay. Would that be enough time for everybody? And that, again, would just be confidential until we had that conversation. Mrs. Voight?
I would move that we ratify these procedures, that the night of the, on the 5th, we can just get right into the interview process.
Would you agree to the addition that we had in terms of the...
As discussed.
The deadlock? Okay. Thank you.
So, just for clarification, what was specifically changed? Just so I'm...
If we had two rounds of voting with the same outcome...
That's right, okay.
That we would take a vote as to whether we want to continue voting.
Thank you, I'll second.
Anything else? All right, Ms. Eddinger, take the roll call, please.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Kelly Piesek?
Aye, passes eight-zero. Thanks, everybody. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, we'll begin with a gift report for tonight. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, two gifts to report out on. North High School received a donation of food from Golden Chicken, value of $560 for the Waukesha North Rugby Team's banquet. And SDW Environmental Education received 20 youth waiters and 20 pairs of youth rubber boots, value of $1,460, from Wisconsin House Outdoorsman's Club, to be used for the Fox River Exploration Programs.
All right, thank you. Your consent agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. The policies included in your consent agenda are Policy 152 Officers and Policy 8431, Preparedness for Toxic Hazards. Policy 171.3 Clerk was tabled at the Policy Committee. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for consideration, please indicate so at this time. Seeing none, Mr. Barowski, would you present the consent agenda for approval, please?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. President. All right, sorry, I've misplaced it here. Okay, we have four resignations and 19 newer confirmed contracts for approval this evening. A revised consent agenda was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as revised.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Koenig, thank you. Ms. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Kelly Piesek?
Aye, passes eight-zero. Next up is the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piesek. First up tonight, we are going to have the overnight field trip report, now given by Deputy Superintendent Gunnerman.
Good evening. Most recently, the following field trips have been approved. These are overnight field trips. So, one for South, which is for the mock trials, and that will be in Chicago, Illinois, and that will be in November. Another one for South, which is for the dance Poms team, for a national competition in Orlando, Florida. That will be in February. There's one for West, for the varsity dance. This is the Badgerette Midwest Championship in Schaumburg, Illinois. That will be in August. And another one for West, which is boys soccer. This is the Great River Classic in Iowa. That's in September. And those are the overnight field trips that have been approved.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gunnerman. All right, second, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Thede to help introduce you to our two newest administrators sitting here in the front row this evening. We're grateful to have them.
Okay, so I would like Patrick Rooney and Iris Sevilla to please stand. Okay, so I'm very excited this evening to welcome, we'll start with Patrick Rooney. He is, as you recall, a thoughtful leader who values getting to know students and staff on a personal level. He has a strong understanding of using data to positively increase student results. He is a listener and believes in being clear but kind. He values doing what is best for students and supporting teachers to improve their practice, to increase student results. And he is the assistant principal over at South, and he already jumped in since his approval just two short weeks ago. So, welcome, Patrick. And then next, I'm going to welcome Iris Sevilla. So Iris, she is a bilingual professional who believes in high expectations for all. She wants to create a positive school culture through communication of expectations to all stakeholders. She has a strong experience with working with data, and understands that middle school can be challenging for students, and works to make sure that they're engaged in learning and in co-curricular activities to feel a sense of belonging. She comes back to us from a year away, gaining some leadership experience, and has also jumped right in at Hoarding as an assistant principal after her approval just one month ago. So please join me in welcoming, putting a name with a face with both Patrick and Iris.
Thank you both for being here, and welcome.
Yes, welcome. All right. Okay, third, this evening, I'm very proud to announce the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award winners for our three high schools. From Waukesha North, for this past school year, they won the conference sportsmanship award in girls golf, boys soccer, boys basketball, boys golf, and girls lacrosse. At South High School, they won it in girls golf, girls tennis, boys soccer, girls cross-country, girls swim and dive, boys swim and dive, boys golf, girls soccer, girls lacrosse, and baseball. And at West High School, they won it in girls golf, girls volleyball, wrestling, boys golf, girls track, and girls lacrosse. And then, as a special treat, Waukesha South earned the Classic Eight Overall Sportsmanship Award this year. And this is South's seventh overall conference championship, sportsmanship championship award in the last 10 years. So, very impressive. And then lastly, just really quickly, this is our last board meeting before the start of the school year. And I don't know how that happened, but it did. So, we are gearing up for the 24-25 school year. It's been a great summer, and I really want to recognize our custodial and maintenance crews this evening for all of their hard work over this summer. And as you know, we have invested close to $16 million due to your support since last school year and this summer, to upgrade our facilities, and it's really remarkable. And so, as those facilities get updated, and all the staff and the kids come back, they're also going to walk into just absolutely clean and beaming facilities due to these wonderful individuals, when everybody comes back officially on Tuesday, September 3rd. So, I know we won't see each other until the first day of school, some of us, right, for student services and teaching and learning, most likely. But enjoy the remaining weeks of August, the remaining weeks of the summer, and get ready for what promises to be just a fantastic 24-25 school year. Thank you, Dr. Piesek.
Thank you. I know those last two weeks of August are very busy for all of you, getting ready for the students to come back. Well, and it's birthday month for Ms. Kozlowski, so that's very important. Well, many of us or many families are trying to get those last moments of vacation in, so thank you all for getting ready for the kids coming back. All right, we're going to move into our policy updates. So our first, I'm sorry, our committee updates. Our first committee tonight is Policy and Government Relations, given by Mr. Wad.
Thank you, Mrs. President. The Policy and Government Relations Committee met on Monday, August 12th, 2024. The agenda included two policy revisions, which were approved at the committee meeting and included on the consent agenda this evening. Those were Policies 0152, titled Officers, and 8431, titled Preparedness for Toxic Hazards. One new policy was on the agenda... One new policy was on the agenda, that is Policy 7544, Use of Social Media. The committee previously reviewed this policy at the June 10th meeting, and the, the policy was tabled. The committee suggested revisions at that time, which have since been incorporated into the policy. The revisions provide clarification and delineation between staff personal use and district use. In addition, other policies that reference social media have been listed at the end of the policy. The committee voted to approve Policy 7544, Use of Social Media, and ISO move.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. All right, discussion. Mrs. Voight?
We had raised a lot of concerns. I really appreciate the efforts that Dr. Seabert and his support staff did to make the changes that have been made. I had raised a lot of the questions and I was, you know, was, all my questions had been, you know, had been responded to and answered accordingly. One was, why do we need this? Don't we already have social media identified in, in the various handbooks and things like that? And as you take a look at the third page of the, of it, there are twenty-five places that are listed at the end as a reference where the, all those references are out there about social media, and the concept here is to tie it all together into one social media policy, which I really appreciate the why of what, why, why it's here. I, I raised several questions, and I appreciate the responses I got. I don't know if you want to, if I should go through some of those for the benefit of anyone who didn't sit through an hour-long discussion as we did it at the, at the, the level of our, of our meeting. But I have like five points that I could share. If you would want me to go with that, or you want other people to speak first?
Well, you have the floor right now, so I don't see anyone else moving to speak.
I think just for clarification, since this is something I think that's extremely important for all staff to be aware of. Reading the policy, I, I read it very literally, you know, as, as a staff person. And a couple of things that, as staff people are reading it, to realize that when it talks about the superintendent, Dr. Seabert does not have, in his job description, to have to look at everybody's posts and approve them. It's the superintendent or a designee. And the second thing that I thought was confusing was under the section of Social Media for Instructional and School-Sponsored Activities. When it talks about employees are prohibited from using personal social media accounts to communicate or otherwise connect or interact with students for any purpose that is not related to instructional or school sponsored activities. That does not mean a parent cannot email their child, or cannot use social media with their child. You know, that this, not to be confused with familial relationships that are, would be allowed in social media, because this is really truly employees. I really appreciate the fact that this policy, under the heading of Expected Standards of Conduct on District Approved Social Media, does a really good job of calling for respectful, courteous, and professional manner of use of social media. And I think that that respect, courtesy, civil manner, you know, you know, is, is, in this day and age, we talked about the toxicity of, of social media. We need to set that standard as an expectation for the communication with the school district of Waukesha. And I think that, you know, this, this does a really nice job of, of putting that down, expecting no libelous or defamatory comments, no hate speech, et cetera, that it's all spelled out right here. And I, I really appreciate that. And most of it is district-approved use of the social media platforms, but it does switch for the last two paragraphs to personal use. And this is something that I think is extremely important for all staff to be aware of. And the, the rollout that we've talked about for new policies and a consistent way to staff throughout the district, I think it's important for this to be passed tonight, that it can be available for first day of school, and especially for this personal use aspect of it. Two parts under that category that I think are extremely important for all staff members to be aware of. One is, employees are permitted to use personal communication devices to access social media for personal use during breaks and meal times only. And I think that that's really an important communication for staff to realize that that's, that's when it's supposed to happen and not during class time. And the next thing is, is the idea of a warning, especially to new staff members that may, you know, be new to the educational world of, you know, being a professional world, that what you do on your personal social media, you know, access to that by persons in the district could influence your employment status, that you have to be aware of communication that could interfere with the ability to effectively perform your job. And I think that phrase of it is really especially important for staff to be aware that it's, it's in the policy. Thank you.
Mrs. Kanek?
I just had a clarification. I want to make sure I understood the policy right. When you, Mrs. Voight, when you mentioned like on personal time, like during, you know, lunch and, and breaks, whatever, that's on their own personal device, so not the school-issued device. That, that's a personal device, correct? That's what I understood in the discussion, right? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I'd just like to quickly thank my colleagues on Policy and Government. I know this was something that we took a lot of time on, and, and, and we, we went through thoroughly, and I appreciated the, the discussion and the conversation that we were able to have, and I'm happy with the policy that we were able to achieve. And yeah, I agree, I think it's important that we pass it today before school starts so that teachers, as they're, you know, coming back and, and going into, and services are, are ready to go.
Anything else? All right, it was moved and seconded. Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Kanek?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Keri Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes eight zero. Mr. Wad?
All right, thank you. Next, policy that we will be asking for action on tonight, revisions to Policy 7540, Technology. Those were also reviewed by the committee. The revisions incorporate security and usage procedures and reference Policy 7544, Social Media. The committee voted to approve the revisions to Policy 7540, Technology, and ISO move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brooks. Any discussion on this one? Mrs. Voight?
I have one thing that I think, again, is important for all staff to be aware of. In the section, or Use of District-Owned Devices, it speaks to the fact that no device may be used to access any material that's prohibited by the district's technology usage, usage policies. I, I think I'll just keep reading the whole thing without the reference, references there. Devices may not be used to access content that is unlawful or potentially harmful to the device, and may never be used to access any dark web content. Specifically, use of devices to access material that poses a risk of introducing viruses, malware, or other destructive content is strictly prohibited. Users are responsible for replacing devices that are inoperable due to the introduction of such malicious content while in the user's possession. So I think, again, it's really important, you know, I, I mentioned the little, little test surveys that we've had the opportunity to work with, you know, that, that Mr. Schulman puts out for, for us, that those are valid to make sure staff focuses on the fact that you don't want to get caught into, into a phishing scheme that sets up a situation like this. And if you do, you know, you're responsible for the damage done to your machine. And I think, again, that's important to realize.
Mrs. Kozlowski?
So I, I appreciate the, Mrs. Voight, reading through all of this as a alert to our staff. And, and to some degree, I'm, I'm kind of sitting here wondering how many of our staff are actually intentionally trying to find the dark web and do inappropriate things on our things that I would need to call it out and remind them that this is unacceptable use of a device, period. But I, I just, I, it just was interesting to me that that would be a piece to call out. But on that note, I've seen things in other districts where staff are doing it, so I guess in fairness, be an adult, use your device as appropriate, and follow the rules, so.
Mrs. Voight?
I, the, the part that I was definitely wanted to realize is that they would be responsible for paying for the damage. You know, and we don't offer like an insurance option, I don't think, in the district. You know, that, that'd be a thousand bucks out of your own pocket if, if that happens. And I think that that's an important thing to be aware of.
Okay, any other comments? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
David Wad?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Betty Kanek?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Keri Kozlowski?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes eight zero.
All right, finally, during the Government Relations portion of the meeting, Dr. Seabert reported on the summer legislative visits. Dr. Seabert and various board members have met with Representative Adam Nayland, Representative Scott Allen, Senator Rob Hutton, and Representative Cindy Dukow. In addition, we are working to schedule a visit with Senator Julian Bradley as soon as is practicable. The visits have been excellent opportunity for relationship building and to discuss how various legislative topics impact our district. Any questions on any of those? Visits or comments?
I don't see any.
All right, the next Policy and Government Relations Committee meeting will be held on Monday, September 9th. This concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, our next committee report for tonight is Finance and Facilities, given by Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik.
You're welcome.
The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting met on Monday, August 12th. There is one action item and two discussion items. The first action item is the approval of the 2024-2025 Preliminary Budget and Tax Levy. The committee approved the 2024-2025 Preliminary Budget with total revenue of $215,578,258 and total expenditures of $223,20835. The committee approved the preliminary 2024-2025 tax levy of $82,211,374, which is based on an assumption of equalization aid increasing by 4% for fiscal year 2024-2025. The preliminary tax levy as presented tonight reflects a 1% increase over the previous year. It is important to point out that the preliminary tax levy is based on a set of assumptions that need to be made at this point in the budget development process. The upcoming key dates will allow the district to calculate and approve the final 2024-2025 tax levy in late October. Results of the third Friday pupil count on September 19th, certification of the district's equalized property valuation on October 1st, certification of general state aid and voucher program participation levels on October 15th, and final 2024-2025 budget and tax levy on October 28th. In addition to this set of reporting dates, the district is also awaiting guidance from the Department of Public Instruction on the potential impact the Milwaukee Public Schools' financing reporting difficulties will have on all Wisconsin Public School District's equalization aid certifications. At the budget hearing on September 11th, the administration will present the approved budget, preliminary budget and tax levy to the public as our best estimate for the 2024-2025 school year. The committee approved the preliminary 2024-2025 budget and tax levy, and ISO move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Any questions? Any discussion? All right, Mr. Wad?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's just important to reiterate that the unknowns that we have do make it very difficult to, to try to estimate where we'll come in on the levy. I, in, any potential increase or potential decrease? We don't know yet. We had to come up with a number for, so for those in the public, I hope the message that they hear is that our target is to keep their property tax increase on the school district portion of it to 1% or less. That is what our goal is, as a board, by passing this. If it's different than that, it is likely to be primarily driven by what winds up coming out of the final reporting that MPS files. And for those that haven't been following it, what happens at MPS has a dramatic increase on some districts' state aid. And I think Mr. Clark could confirm the exact number, but I believe last year, reporting difficulties wound up costing us $880,000 that we needed to make up. Is that right?
Eight fifty-three.
Eight fifty-three.
Okay, approximately $850,000 that we had to come up with in the levy to bridge that gap. And it, I just think it's really important for people to understand the interconnectedness between what happens at MPS with their reporting and the difficulties that they've had, and how it may ultimately impact the taxpayers of Waukesha County. And we can gripe about that and ask the legislature to look at how we can disconnect ourselves from that sort of impact, because it's not just us, it's hundreds of districts, districts around the state. But I think it's important to provide our citizens with the, the notification that a variance could have, you know, if there's a variance, it most likely will have something to do with what the final reports are that MPS still hasn't filed, and I think are now going on at least a year overdue. So, and I don't know that we have any confidence that they'll be filed anytime soon, so.
Thank you. I think there's significant uncertainty in the aid projection. If the, if the final aid amount comes in anywhere near what's in the aid projection, this preliminary proposal is a very high conservative overestimate of what the levy will be. So, we expect it to be better than what we're seeing. Any other comments? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, she take the roll call.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Kanek?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Keri Kozlowski?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes eight zero.
There are two discussion items for tonight. The first is the monthly budget report. Year-to-date revenue and expenditures are within the normal range for this phase of, phase of the fiscal year. The second discussion item is the Key Performance Indicators. The committee reviewed the district's current finance and operational KPIs and offered suggestions to their structure and content. This item will be placed on upcoming committee agendas for further discussion and possible action. The next FNF meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 9th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. And Dr. Piasik, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. All right, our next committee up for tonight is Teaching and Learning, which will be given by Mrs. Kanek.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. We have no action items. We have five discussion items that appear on the agenda for Teaching and Learning this evening. Our first discussion item was a proposed revision of Board Policy 5460, the graduation requirements to incorporate the Act 60, Personal Financial Literacy Requirements, beginning with the class of 2028. Additional work has been done to improve the readability and clarity of the graduation requirements policy. Following committee discussion, more revisions will be considered by the administration to help clarify how requirements are met in English and physical education. It will be brought back for further discussion and possible action at a later date. Yeah, our next discussion item is the Hadfield Achievement Gap Reduction Grant Update. This report brought information to the school board about the Hadfield Achievement Gap Reduction, or the AGR grant. This is a program that was established in the 2015-16 year, school year, and allows participating schools to implement one of three strategies in grade K through three in order to reduce the existing achievement gap. An update to the school board is required twice per year. Hadfield Principal Mr. Elliott shared that the Hadfield team is utilizing a combination of all three of the strategies identified by the grant at this time. Those three are instructional coaching for grades K through third grade teachers in literacy and math, tutoring or added intervention opportunities for struggling students provided by the instructional coaches, and small class size in grades K through 3. Mr. Elliott shared encouraging literacy and math growth data from spring eye-ready evaluations and recognized Hadfield staff for their positive mindset and commitment to all students.
Any questions or comments?
Next, we have the AP Literature Curriculum Review and Textbook Adoption Update. This report provided an update on the textbook adoption renewal process for AP Literature and Composition. As with all our, all other AP classes, the College Board provides a course framework, essential units, and recommends textbook and materials for instructors. The AP Literature and Composition Class is currently using Pareen's Literature, Structure, Sound, and Sense, 10th Edition, and its textbook. The textbook was adopted in 2011. This summer, SDW's three AP literature teachers came together to review their individual syllabi in an effort to align and build a common syllabus from the curriculum provided by the College Board. The team also reviewed two possible textbooks and are recommending we move to the most recent edition of the current text, which is the 13th Edition, published in 2023. The team will return to the Teaching and Learning Committee in the future when they are ready to seek approval for the new texts and supplemental materials.
Mrs. Koenig, Mr. Brooks had a comment, I think, on the previous item and then maybe also on this one. I'm not sure. Okay.
Just on the previous one, I just wanted to quickly note, I was absolutely blown away by the presentation that we had for the Hadfield Achievement Gap Reduction, not just the results that they are getting there, but I was so impressed by the clear and obvious passion and joy for teaching that Principal Elliott has. I've had the privilege of working with a lot of great educators and a lot of great administrators in my time in education, and that is exactly the type of person that I would be, you know, so excited to work for and to show up to work every day, just because you can tell how much he cares about the kids and how much he cares about his staff as well. So I cannot say enough great things about that presentation.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add to that. In my visitations to Hadfield, the sentiments are real. The teachers are extremely positive, and they really feel their administrator is very responsive and, you know, hands-on. And it's a really neat culture over there. Okay, our fourth discussion or information item is the Middle School Science Curriculum Pilot. The current curriculum and curricular resource, IQWST, have been in place since 2016 and was approved again in 2022 for a third year, three-year period. So the current subscription will expire at the end of the 24-25 school year. Over the past year, the Middle School Science Committee completed a historical review, identified best practices aligned with state and national frameworks, and vetted possible curricular resources for adoption based on these frameworks. Following pilot evaluations this fall, this work will be brought back for further discussion in January and a recommendation for resource adoption in February of 2025. Okay, and our final discussion or information item is the KPIs, or the Key Performance Indicators for Teaching and Learning. The current KPIs for Teaching and Learning, established in the 2021 school year, were reviewed and recommendations to either continue, revise, or discontinue the KPI were brought forward for discussion. The recommendations included proficiency measures in third-grade reading, eighth-grade math, and the percentage of high school students who meet the college and career readiness benchmarks on the junior ACT assessment. This will return to the, this will return to the September agenda as discussion with a possible action. Madam President, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee Report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 3, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, next up is the Student Services Committee, presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The Student Services Committee was, was held on August 6, and we had no action items, but we do have five discussion information items. The first was on transportation, an update from Joni Sablik and Lada Cass, both managers from First Student. They provided us with an update on driver staffing. There are estimates right now that 76 to 80 drivers are needed to cover all the routes. So far, they have secured 56 drivers and 27 additional applicants in various stages of the training cycle. Compared with last year, that's about triple where we were in training at this time last year. First Student and the district have worked together to market opportunities to drive for First Student, things like Big Bus, No Big Deal, which was a sharing space at the county fair. There's been banners and signs in front of the schools and a combined effort, hiring event, rather, on August 7. First Student also sponsored multiple events to promote the name and engage with the Waukesha community. Families are encouraged to have alternate transportation plans just in case, but First Student and the district will communicate with families about anticipated shortages and routes before the school year begins, if there are any. The second information discussion item we had was the role of the district nurse. We've been going over several of these throughout the course of the Student Services Committee over the past year. Beth Pepler joined us to discuss her work as one of three district nurses supporting student learning. The nurses serve as a liaison between staff, parents, and medical providers. They staff training, they attend IEPs and 504 meetings, and maintain district medical and emergency supplies on their link, on a lengthy list of responsibilities that they all have. The district nurses serve six or seven schools each, and each has a health room clerical assistant who manages daily needs of the students under the licenses of each district nurse. Our third information item was along with the nursing, the role of the nurse, and Beth Pepler gave us the annual nursing report, which highlighted portions of that report, health rooms that continue to see increased visits over previous years, and parents reporting more medical conditions throughout the annual online registration. Example, diabetic management for 51 of our students can take up to two hours per day, providing those, that care and those needs to each child. Of course, as diabetic students, time in health rooms diminishes as they, as they mature and are able to manage their own needs. A lot of those come at the elementary level. Our district AEDs are provided throughout, through a Project Adam grant. As part of the grant, the district creates medical emergency response teams at each school to conduct annual emergency drills to practice response to a sudden cardiac event. When our schools complete these drills, they're designated as Heart Safe Schools. North, South, West High Schools, Butler and Les Paul Middle Schools have achieved this designation. East High School and Horning are ready to complete their drill and therefore will receive the designation. Elementary schools will earn this in the coming year, '24 and '25. And all schools manage their own emergency response plans prior to the program. Heart Safe Schools programs allow the district to have more aligned and consistent approaches throughout. Our fourth information and discussion item was on academic and social behavior curriculum update. Mark Leonard, our Director of Student Services, and Lisa Pollan, Director of Secondary Special Education, presented information on the curriculum review, which began this past spring. The EMLS S Behavior Team measured resources against core competencies, including self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Navigate 360 is the selected resource for the recommended pilot program. This resource can serve students from kindergarten through graduation in multiple languages, but will be piloted at the middle and high school levels. The brief web-based lessons ensure students receive appropriate information in an engaging format. Over 500 student lessons are available, along with companion lessons for staff and families that align with Wisconsin Competencies Framework. The EMLS S team will provide an update to the board in the winter after gathering feedback from staff, students, and families and evidence of learning through these student assessments. Our final, fifth and final discussion item was on KPIs, our Key Performance Indicators. The current KPI for Student Services was reviewed, and the recommendations to either continue, revise, or discontinue with the KPI were brought forward for discussion. As reported in the spring of last year, the student engagement KPI has been measured through data gathered from Hope, Wellness, and Engagement District surveys. The data gathered over time has been similar and is taken from one question within the survey, which is, students respect others who are different. Moving forward, Mr. Pat recommended using student attendance data to measure student engagement. The continuous improvement of comprehensive systems and services for all students will increase engagement because students feel safe at school, contribute to a positive culture, and are part of a positive climate.
That would conclude my report for this evening. Student Services will meet again on Tuesday, September 3, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zenobia. Any comments? We've got some background noise as the pool is closing next door. All right. Our last committee report for tonight is Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Mr. Barowski.
Okay, thank you, Ms. President. Our committee met earlier this evening at between 6:00 and 6:30, and just like all the other committees, we were discussing the key performance indicators. We had no action items, but the one discussion item was the key performance indicators. And there are currently four KPIs for employee satisfaction and engagement. We reviewed those. We had, I think, what was a good and helpful discussion on how each is measured, what's maybe changed over the last few years, and how we might change some of the measures. And I think we gave Ms. Thede some direction on what else we might want to find out and know and discuss for next month. So we look forward to the continued discussion and eventually getting to some recommendations.
Okay.
Any questions?
Not seeing any.
All right, that concludes my report, Ms. President.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our regular business for tonight. Are there any recommendations for future board or committee discussion? All right. We do have a need for an executive session this evening. We need all three. Okay, we would need B and C tonight, then. I'm sorry, B and D. Yep, B and D. Would someone be interested in reading that? Mr. Wad?
B and D?
B and D.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. And that's on a personnel matter. And also to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin Statutes 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. So this would be for the superintendent evaluation and compensation for superintendent and executive administrators.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Koenig. Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kerry Kazlowski.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes eight zero. That concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday,